Good evening and welcome to the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three regular-held city council member, city council meeting, toy boat, toy boat. And welcome to everybody here. It's great to see a full, full house tonight. Happy healthy New Years in advance. We'll start with a notice that I want to notice that all five council members are here. Mayor Pro Tem Alicia Weintraub, Councilmember James Visagian, Councilmember Ed Albrecht, and Councilmember Peter Kraut, along with our City Manager and City Attorney are present. Can I ask for our Commissioner, John Mueller, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Can I ask for approval of the agenda?
Still moved.
Seconded. It's been moving seconded. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I did want to mention that obviously the first part is, I'm, I'm here in person. Should be noted in the first part, it should be stricken about me being in Sacramento.
Yes, noted once. All right. So noted, and that is five oh. Thank you. All right. Now we'll ask for the City Attorney, if I can ask you to report on closed session.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to consider two items, Conference of Labor Negotiator regarding all underrepresented employees, and Conference of Legal Counsel regarding existing litigation, Weston versus City of Calabasas. No report of action was taken on either item. The Council continued discussion of the third item regarding the T N H C Kennedy Oaks case to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And since you're on a roll, I'm going to have you read into the record. Tonight, we are proceeding with an emergency item, Declaration of Emergency Regarding Severe Winter Storm, added per Government Code Section five four nine five four point two and five four nine five six point five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this one will need two votes. The first vote is a vote to add it to the agenda as an emergency item arising after the agenda was posted and requiring immediate action, that is to adopt an emergency, the item to be added is to adopt emergency declaration regarding the severe winter storms we've just experienced and are expected to experience over this weekend, and providing for the necessary response and funding for that response. So I would recommend with that vote, if the majority so supports, add it to the agenda. Then I'll read the declaration, and then the Council could adopt the agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to add this item as an emergency item to the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moving and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five oh.
And with that, then we'll consider the item. The item is to have the Council proclaim the existence of a local emergency for winter storms by the Calabasas City Council. The, and I'll read the resolution in short, but to read it in the record, given that it was added as such. Whereas, Calabasas Municipal Code, Section two forty-four zero six zero, empowers the City Council to proclaim the existence or threaten existence of a local emergency when said city is affected or likely to be affected by a public calamity. And whereas the Director of Emergency Services of the City does hereby find that the Governor has declared a state of emergency in response to the winter storms, and whereas a local emergency is defined in Government Code Section eight five five eight sub C, impertinent part as follows, local emergency means the duly proclaimed existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the territorial limits of a county caused by conditions such as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic riot, drought, cyberterrorism, sudden and severe energy shortage, dehumanization, event, plant or animal infestation or disease, or an earthquake, or other conditions which are or are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of that political body. Whereas, as a result of a series of atmospheric river systems, the city has been impacted by high winds, substantial precipitation, closure and damage to highways and roads, potential for significant debris flows, river and urban flooding, and widespread power outages. The National Weather Service has forecasted that additional and continuing storms related to this series of atmospheric river systems threaten the city. Coordination, collaboration, and the combined forces of different jurisdictions are imperatively needed to effectively respond to and recover from these unlikely forecasted severe winter storms. And whereas, as of January eighth, two thousand twenty-three, there exist conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property on the basis of these severe winter storms in the city, which are or are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of the city, and require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. And whereas, the mobilization of local resources and the ability to coordinate interagency response, accelerate procurement of vital supplies, and use mutual aid will be critical to successfully responding to the emergency for the winter storms. And whereas, these conditions warrant and necessitate that the city proclaim existence of a local emergency. Now, therefore, the City Council finds that conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons exist on the basis of winter storms in the City of Calabasas within the meaning of Government Code Section eight five five eight sub C, and such conditions are or will likely be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of the city, and require the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. And it is hereby ordered and proclaimed by the City Council that a local emergency exists for the winter storms in the city. It is further ordered and proclaimed that during the existence of said local emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of the emergency organization of the city shall be those prescribed by state law, by ordinances, and resolutions of the city. It is further proclaimed and ordered that a copy of this proclamation be forwarded to the Director of the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services. Requesting that the Director find it acceptable in accordance with state law that pursuant to the Governor's proclamation of emergency dated January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, that the Governor waive regulations that may hinder response and recovery efforts, that recovery assistance be made available under the California Disaster Assistance Act, and that the State access to state and federal resources and any other appropriate federal disaster relief programs so ordered. Staff would recommend that the Council approve that declaration after seeing if there's any public comment, as facilitating the city's response to the storms and potential federal and state emergency aid and resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. We'll have a book for you later to read also. Can I ask, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment in person or virtual?
No, Mr. Mayor, no public comment.
Any comments from Council, or is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, we have a vote. It was moved and seconded. Any other questions, comments from Council? Otherwise, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move next on to a presentation by L.A. County Animal Care and Control. And I'm not sure if Dr. Maria is here, or who is here?
They're gonna join us via Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So Bradley Kim and Dr. Maria Savio Salacito. Okay, welcome. I'm looking up.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Don't see you.
Oh. There you go. Hold on.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for having us. I'm with my colleague Bradley Kim, who's our Contracts and Grants Division Manager. I am Dr. Maria Savio Salacito, and I am the Deputy Director overseeing the West County, which includes our Agora Care Center. Next slide.
Thanks, Suckers. Is, are the slides appearing okay for everyone?
We have two dogs and a kitten.
That's right.
All right. Okay, so let's start with just a brief introduction about the department. So the County of Los Angeles Department of Animal Care and Control, which we're, you know, shortly called the S D A C, serves the unincorporated Los Angeles County and forty-five contract cities. We have seven animal care centers located across Los Angeles County, serving more than three million residents and about twenty-five thousand animals annually, but this number is our post-pandemic number. The services that the department provides are the following. For our animal care centers, we have animal care and sheltering and veterinary care. The department also has an emergency and disaster response unit that responds to disasters, just like the Woolsey Fire and all the other fires that has affected L.A. County. We, our ACCs, our officers, also respond to calls from the field specifically for dogs that may pose as a threat to the safety of the community. All the calls are taken into our communication centers, and these are reported to our central, central processing unit, which substantiates the, the calls, you know, making sure that we're establishing facts. Sometimes we get calls, which is pretty much neighbors not liking each other, and then we get all these calls reporting about the, the neighbor's dog. So we make sure that we send out officers to really establish the facts of these calls. We also have a major case unit that investigates animal neglect and abuse. We have our business and licensing unit that not only issues the business licenses for, like, pet stores and kennels, and also we, in accordance with our Title X, the issuance of pet licenses, this unit is responsible for that as well. One of the new things that the department has done is the, having a more progressive approach to community outreach, and we will be discussing that later. But the key piece of what we wanted to do with our community, community outreach is the provision of resources as well as education. And another important piece for the community is the calls that we get with regards to noise abatement or barking dogs. Next slide, please. Now, in June of two thousand nineteen, the department officially adopted the concept of socially conscious animal sheltering. This is a response to a lot of the conflict and the division in the animal welfare industry with the use of the semantics of no kill. Now, socially conscious animal sheltering, the mission is to maximize and focus on positive outcomes while balancing animal comfort and public safety. So meaning, while we do our jobs and try to provide the positive outcomes for the animals that come into our care, we also need, are looking into the quality of life that these animals have within our care. Now, some of the principles of socially conscious animal sheltering is the effort to ensure that every unwanted or homeless animal has a place to go for shelter and care. Making every healthy and safe animal available for adoption. Alleviate animal suffering and make appropriate euthanasia decisions, and fostering a culture of transparency and ensuring policy alliance with the community needs. Next slide, please. One of the important learnings that we've had brought about by the pandemic is the implementation of managed intake. In concept, managed intake is exactly what it is, making sure that we are managing the influx of the animals coming into our care centers. And the focus are on the following: community engagement. During the pandemic, we realized that for the longest time, animal welfare agencies like us have been trying to do all the work by ourselves because that is our job. But the job or the problem is way bigger than what we could actually handle, and so we have been working way beyond our capacity. But since the, the need for the care for the animals and for all the homeless animals, we engage the community, you know, to be able to work with them more collaboratively, to give opportunities to foster networking and facilitate adoptions. And surprisingly enough, we, we realized that there are so many members of the community just waiting and wanting to learn more on how to help. So community engagement was very important. Another thing about managed intake is looking into the kind of animals that are coming into our care. Pre-pandemic, I guess, focusing on being able to take in the animals when they come to our care centers, we do not have the appropriate conversations with the owners and recognizing that later on, you know, because of the pandemic, we, we realized that a huge percentage of people coming in wanting to, well, wanting to surrender their animals are really just needing a little bit of assistance. And so by providing resources such as food, training, medical care, and supplies, we have, we have seen a, a significant decrease in animals being surrendered, you know, to our care centers. With regards to the stray animals, the approach was to see, you know, if the, is the care center really the place for animals to come in. Pre-pandemic, we are taking in a huge amount of, of cats, and fifty percent of the cats are getting euthanized. And even if they're healthy, even, you know, it's simply because nobody's coming to adopt them. Whereas, we recognize that a lot of these cats are thriving in some areas in the community. And so this is again, part of what we looked into, to work with the community if that is a possibility of keeping healthy, free-roaming cats. We also put an effort in making reunification strategies for animals that are being found in the field. Our officers are being given tools to be able to search on site immediately if they found a stray dog, if it has a microchip, if, if it's, you know, to be able to reunite them, you know, with, with their owners, simply because, you know, these animals just probably strayed off, you know, unintentionally. And then lastly, for the public safety and animal welfare, we make sure that if a person comes to our care centers with a sick or injured animal, we do take them in. And also for animals that have behavior issues that are going to be posing as a threat to public safety, they are definitely being impounded at our care centers. Next slide. So in comparison to the old model versus managed intake, when pet owners are looking to surrender animals, we were not able to even provide them options. Whereas, in the new model, conversations are happening, and again, as I mentioned, we realized that a lot of these people that are coming in, they don't want to part with their family member. They just needed a little bit of help. And in the old model, all the animals are accepted at the animal care centers, no questions asked. And this has resulted to unnecessary deaths, specifically for, for the cats. And that is something that we are trying to change with the managed intake model. The intake of animals, pre-pandemic, was sixty thousand animals annually, which is down to an intake of twenty-six thousand animals annually in two thousand twenty-two, which means that we are now being able to provide a more individualized care. We are actually seeing the animals, you know, as individual animals, not like before because of the number comparing it to our capacity to care for them. They are just a herd. Now, sick and injured animals accepted at animal care centers, it still continues on. We are there to provide that support to the community. In the old models, we don't have appointments. People just come at any time of the day. In the managed intake model, we have specific walk-in hours for people that are just looking around, but we also have time for an appointment-based system, which allows more conversations, making sure that we are really serving the need of people that are coming into the care center. And, you know, the counseling services are being made available. Next, please. So what has managed intake done to our stats? You can see that the cat and dog live release rate has increased by fourteen percent from two thousand nineteen, pre-pandemic, to two thousand twenty-one. The return to owner rate increased, which is significant because, again, who wants to be parted from their family members? And so managed intake has enabled us to assist in reuniting pets with their owners, increasing from fourteen percent to twenty percent. The stray intake has gone down sixty-three percent, and owner surrenders have gone down fifty-eight percent. For Agora's numbers, Brad will be the one discussing this.
Thank you. So if we're looking at Agora, Agora Care Center specifically, it's pretty in line with all of the care centers and what we've seen. We've seen about a fifty percent decrease at Agora, with the majority of those being cats, and the majority of those cats being community cats or feral cats that normally, as Dr. has mentioned, we would have impounded, but because they tend to thrive better in the communities, especially when paired with stay neutered, we don't want to intake those cats. So the majority of the animals we are taking, and now that the animals that are primarily being euthanized we see are those that are either have serious medical conditions or with dogs, dogs that may be posed dangerous behaviors, so aren't safe to adopt up to the public. So in the past, when we were seeing a large number of animals being euthanized for maybe space, lack of space at the care centers, or a lack of time from short staff, those numbers have declined significantly, and the majority of the animals that are being euthanized are animals that for one reason or another can't be adopted into a home. And then if we're looking specifically at the City of Calabasas, again, it's pretty in line with what we've seen with all the care centers. Intake was down about thirty-seven percent last fiscal year. We don't have the full stats yet for this fiscal year, but we are seeing somewhat of a, somewhat of a spike compared to the last couple of years. And this is attributed mostly to owner surrenders are starting to increase. And that's largely because adoptions really skyrocketed during the pandemic when people were home and they had time to care for animals. But unfortunately, with inflation and significantly rising pet costs, we're seeing a lot of pet owners rendering their pets to care centers, which is why a lot of these intervention programs like Dr. has mentioned are so important, because a lot of the time we find that if we make medical services available, or behavior training, or, or even pet food and supplies temporarily, a lot of these pet owners won't, won't surrender their pets. And then that not only helps us mitigate intake, but allows us to focus resources on the animals that are in our care that really need it. So this is related to the city, city cost, of course, because beginning of fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, we started to build the city by impound per impound. So there are cities built on flat per impound rate for cats and dogs. So when we decrease intake, of course, that subset leads to decreased overall charges for the city, better outcomes for animals, decrease, decrease invoices for the cities. And then, Dr. will get into this more, but our pets are family or path programs. These are a number of programs that we've designed based on the needs that we found that pet owners typically need to keep their pets. And again, Dr. will get more into that in a couple of slides, but actually this slide.
Brendan and Doctor, I appreciate it's, I appreciate all your great work. Is there a way you can just wrap it up pretty quickly? We have a lot of people here, and we have some business to attend to. My apologies for interrupting.
Yeah. Now, this is, we only have like this slide and another one. Just wanted to show that we do have these programs available, and the very significant one is the Care Voucher Program, which actually is a collaboration with our grant funders and veterinarians, local veterinarians, and even the pet owners who are not just trying to get some dolouts, but actually are partnering with us to take care of their pets. And in two thousand twenty-two, we were able to issue fifteen hundred vouchers. Next slide.
Yeah, coyotes. So a lot of, a lot of cities that we handle coyote calls, we only handle coyotes like other wildlife, if they're sick or injured and need medical attention. But otherwise, the Department of Fish and Wildlife doesn't allow the relocation of coyotes. And we just highly suggest that pet owners get the rabies vaccination span to their pets, so they don't have a desire to go out and keep their pets indoors at night and on leash. And then these are just a number. We typically receive about a million dollars in grants and donations. Our largest funding partners are typically the A S B C A, Annenberg Foundation, and Pet Co. Love, and I'll skip past that one. We also have our nonprofit agency who supports the department, and they, they fund a number of programs that the department can't fund through its normal budget. Some of the more significant ones include Care Voucher, like Dr. S. mentioned, and then also our Dreams Come True program, which provides funding up to two thousand dollars in medical funding for animals who have serious medical conditions. And that's the last of our slides. Yeah, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that important presentation and, and all the wonderful work you do. Are there any questions, Madam Clerk, online or in, in the chambers? I don't see any hands up or cards in. Oh, there is a card. Please, if you give it to the Madam Clerk, our City Clerk, Maria Hernandez, and please go up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak, as everyone does later on, three minutes to speak on any matter. Please, go ahead. Introduce yourself and tell us your city.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Rebecca R. Vizou, and I live in Agora Hills. I am the founder of Buffett's Brigade, a grassroots group of animal welfare advocates named after the dog I rescued off of the Agora Pound's death row fifteen years ago. There are a lot of red flags in the county's presentation. Everyone needs to take notice, ask the right questions, and demand answers, especially all contract cities such as Calabasas, because you have the leverage with L.A. County via the power of your purse. The county provided statistics telling us how many animals entered their facility, how many went out the front door alive, but they don't tell us how many went out the back door in disposal barrels or body bags. The current managed intake policy is the antithesis of the no-kill movement. Reducing staff and overhead is prioritized over saving lives. If you support no-kill movement, you do not support managed intake or socially conscious sheltering that is currently in place at L.A. County shelters. It's gaslighting and a smokescreen to cover up how many animals they killed, despite recently raising the city's fees from fifty dollars a day to three hundred and eighty-one dollars per impounded animal. They don't tell us how they determine an animal was healthy or adoptable, or what is the procedure to sentence an animal to death for behavior issues. They kill animals with alleged behavior problems, but don't even employ one certified behaviorist. The current Director of L.A. County Animal Control, Marsha Maeda, is a fierce critic of the no-kill movement, and her adoption of managed intake policy proves in black and white that it does not prioritize saving lives. In fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, the Agora Pound kills sixty-seven percent of its animals after implementing managed intake. This is when counting other animals besides dogs and cats. Sure, intakes are down under managed intake, but that's resulting in people dumping cats because the Agora Pound refuses to take them in. There were pictures on Instagram over the summer of cats in crates being dumped on Agora Road. I urge the city to demand all statistics from L.A. County, question your invoices, question protocols for assessing the health and behavior of animals, and demand that county works collaboratively, collaboratively with the rescue groups to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other, Madam Clerk, any other?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Susan Ellis on Zoom. We'll bring her in.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis, you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Susan Ellis, I live in Calabasas. It is incomprehensible to me that DACC thinks it's okay to leave cats outside that are friendly and or have pet, or have been pets. When DACC tells the public to leave the free-roaming cat where it was, to leave the free roaming cat where it was, and that was a quote, how do they know it was not a cat that had been living in a home and escaped or was dumped? Not all free roaming cats are feral cats. And there's a big difference between a friendly former pet, whether recently escaped from its home or has been on the street for a while, and ferals. DACC no longer makes that distinction if they won't even take in the cat to find out. A recent example from Agora, which I think Rebecca just mentioned, someone found a cat in a carrier by the side of the road and the person at the Agora DACC said to put it back where the Good Samaritan found it. That advice, that advice is criminal animal abuse. That is just one of the many examples of what DACC is now doing at all of their branches, not just Agora. And not to mention leaving defenseless cats out for animal predators and human cat abusers. Yes, they are both out there. We pay taxes for the county to take care of helpless animals, not to abandon them like their irresponsible owners. So while our taxes decrease, DACC was not doing their job with the old model and so invented a new model to justify their lack of care for abandoned stray cats. Among those could be a cat that got out of their home and is chipped and could be reunited with their family, but now DACC won't even assist with that. With the new model, what kind of resources can be provided if apartments don't allow cats or a family member becomes allergic, et cetera? DACC's answer to that is put them on the street. The old model is bad and the new model is worse. Tax dollars paying for exorbitant salaries of bad management at the top and that's about it. DACC approaching the city with the presentation, with this presentation is just a PR stunt to try and make city leader leaders and the public believe they are doing a job they are not. Ask anyone in cat and or animal rescue and they will tell you the same thing that I have just said and more. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
No more public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome.
No more comments from the public. Thank you. Do we have any uh council comments or questions on this? Seeing none, I will thank you for this report and move on to the next item of business, which is our Sheriff's Crime Report. We have Deputy Di Matteo here. Thank you very much for being here.
Good evening. Uh, I am Deputy Di Matteo of the Lost Hill Sheriff's Station. I will be presenting the crime reports for the months of October and November. Um, in the interest of time management, I've combined those months and I will provide the stick of statistics.
Thank you.
As Brad. Uh, so uh for October and November, we did have one strong armed robbery. Uh, this incident occurred during early morning hours at a party. Uh, victim was pushed in a designer brand sweatshirt was stolen by force. We did have two assaults uh during those months. One incident occurred at the Commons. Uh, deputies were called um to a business um stemming from an argument between a transient and security. Um, during the contact, the transient became irate and attempted to lock himself inside of one of the businesses where employees and customers were present. Uh, deputies intervened and a female sergeant was assaulted during the process. The other incident occurred in the Gelson's parking lot. Um, this was a family argument and which resulted with a victim um having a broken nose. There were twenty four burglaries uh during those two months combined, twenty four. Um, thirteen of which were residential burglaries. There were six in October and seven in November. All of those burglaries um occurred to homes that backed up to open space. Um, there were four uh commercial based burglaries and four to locked vehicles. There were thirty five reports of theft in the two months. Nineteen occurred in October, most notably six of which were stolen catalytic converters. That's back for some reason. Um, and four stolen vehicles. Uh, Lost Hill Station will be having another catalytic converter etching event coming up. Um, so monitor our social media for when that's going to happen. Sixteen uh reports of theft in November, um, which combined of retail theft and additional four stolen vehicles. Um, finally, we did have one arson. Uh, the properties such as mail and patio furniture uh were set on fire by a twenty six year old male during a family argument. And that wraps up uh my crime report for the months of October and November. Are there any questions?
Thanks very much. Council questions start with Councilmember Bizagian.
Yes, um, the crime rate continues to go up and is unacceptably high. I'll have some comments at the end of the meeting regarding that and some news that I just like to share with the public during your comments is that when I was in Sacramento, um, the Sheriff's Department uh representative who's in Sacramento, the one who stationed up there, informed us that the board of supervisors had um planned to allow for nine new classes of sheriff's deputies this year. Did you know that?
Um, I I didn't know the specific number, but I knew that was going to happen.
Okay, so that will mean I, how how many, I didn't get a chance to ask questions of him. How how many deputies go through each class approximately?
Uh, it depends. It could be anywhere between thirty and a hundred.
Okay, so in conjunction with that, just to let everybody know, we also stated that it's likely that the hiring freeze or the contract freeze will be lifted so that we can get some additional services, which again, I'll make some comments at the end of the meeting about that. But um, any question for you would be, is there any um pattern you see? I mean, you mentioned one that residential burglaries are happening in the open space areas or adjacent to them. Anything else that you noticed of a pattern?
Well, that's the big thing right now is residential burglaries. Um, and I'm continuing to attend HOA meetings um to talk about this and to help residents fortify their property. Um, I will be attending one tomorrow night at the Cambria Hotel uh for a specific HOA, but that right now is our main concern.
Okay, so hopefully we we've provided the deputy with all the HOAs because we have like fifty five of them. And uh, I, you know, he can make his rounds. Uh, because uh I'm I'm just continuing to be extremely concerned, particularly if um in the instance of where a burglar comes across someone inside. I know most of them like to have an empty house, but that doesn't always occur. And there could be much more tragic outcomes if somebody's actually at home. So thank you for the report, Deputy Di Matteo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for ten more intro.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you and everyone at the station continues to do. As I've expressed, I continue to be super concerned about the open space burglaries. And I know we keep educating our residents and people are definitely making improvements, but I know I ask this every month, but what else can we as a city do? What can our residents do? I know people have installed more floodlights, more alarms, but sometimes things just doesn't seem to be helping.
Right, uh, just more education uh for the residents. Um, that's all we have right now. Um, in addition to increased patrols in those areas that are getting hit, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Craft.
Uh, again, thank you, Deputy P. Report. Uh, I just wanted to note, we did mention that crime is going up. I see burglaries are definitely going up, but violent crime appears to be going down. Is that the trend that you see as well?
Yeah, Calabasas, eh, for the most part, violent crime uh is non-existent. Um, it's, it's very, it's based on property crime and theft. Those are the main issues we deal with in Calabasas.
Okay, and when it comes to property crime, just uh to clarify this, because this is something that's always brought up in social media and other avenues. Um, the Sheriff's Department is arresting property crime uh criminals, suspects uh in situations like that, uh regardless of prosecution. Is that right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Albert.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the report. I'm also concerned about public safety and we keep an eye on every one of the functions. Um, I've noticed that um theft with vehicles that are unlocked have gone down, which is a little surprising. I thought it would be with locked. Any comment on that? Because we've been trying to educate everybody on so many uh important points. That's certainly been one of the most.
Locking your car. Yeah, locking everything, your house, your vehicle, that'll definitely reduce your risk of becoming a victim. Um, and pertaining to the vehicles that were stolen, there were eight combined for uh those two months. And I looked into it and there were all types of vehicles. Um, Range Rovers, Jettas, you name it. It was all different kinds. So definitely don't leave your keys in your car. Don't leave your car unlocked.
So as far as the vehicles are concerned, across the board evenly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question or reminder, you brought this up to us. When you talk about lighting, locking doors at homes, sliding glass doors, also you specifically said second story as well, especially in the last few months for home invasion or burglaries.
Yeah, the majority of the burglaries are um occurring in your backyard, coming into your backyard. Um, and they're accessing the second story. Why do they access the second story? Because most people don't alarm the second story. Um, so they'll smash your window, they'll ransack your master bedroom because that's where most of the valuables are located. Um, and they're out of there within two minutes. So um, especially if you guys have safes, keep your valuables in a safe. Bolt it down um to bolt it down in your house so it's hard to take and to get into. Um, and if you're storing high dollar um jewelry or large amounts of cash in that safe, make sure that the stuff inside, you know, um, you're not using a cheap one hundred dollar safe. Use a a very expensive safe that you can bolt down um to make it very difficult to get into.
Thank you. And you brought up the increase in store of the the renewal of increased uh stolen catalytic catalytic converters going on. Can you describe the program you mentioned, which is etching? You're going to, the Sheriff's Department provides as a service, what that is exactly?
Uh, yeah, we partner with local um body shops or mechanics in the area. Um, it's called a catalytic converter etching event. Um, the mechanic or body shop um employee will etch your license plate into your catalytic converter, making it serialized property. This doesn't prevent your catalytic converter from getting stolen, but what it does is it helps us if we arrest somebody in possession of a catalytic converter, locate a victim. So if we can locate a victim, then we can prosecute this individual um to a higher degree. Um, so if if you want to look into protecting your catalytic converter, contact your local mechanic or dealership and they do have methods to help um cover up your catalytic converter and make it almost impossible from being stolen.
Great, thank you. And I know you'll share that with our, the station will share it with our our media department and we'll share it with the public. Yes, thank you very much and thanks to everybody at the station for keeping us all safe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on now to announcements and introductions. We'll start with Mayor Tim Weintraub.
I just wanted to thank our staff for how they handled everything during the recent storm. They all went above and beyond. I just also wanted to mention um Louis Hernandez and his team. I know we had staff that was out there from two in the morning on making sure the roads were clear and that everyone could get up in the morning, go to work, go to school. We were really lucky and our staff is so dedicated. I know most people don't know that we had staff working all through the night. So I just want to acknowledge our Public Works Department under Robert Yalda for everything that they did. And Kindon was providing great updates to the council um and Michael Russo out to the community. So I think we did a really good job during this recent storm, keeping people educated and our staff just went above and beyond. So I wanted to thank them.
Thank you. Councilmember Bizagian.
Well, this is the first uh full week of our new state legislature. And I was up in Sacramento, as I mentioned earlier, at the California Contract Cities Association uh state uh Sacramento Legislative Orientation Tour. And a lot of exciting information, new things coming and also, of course, many uh bad bills being filed for cities, but we'll go over that later. In any event, um I wanted to uh also mention on January twenty eighth, the Ch- Calabasas Chamber of Commerce is having its annual installation banquet and dinner. Uh, and this will be at the Calabasas Country Club. Uh, the Spirit of Calabasas Award winner this year is Kathleen Sterling from the Calabasas Last Virginous Enterprise. So congratulations to Kathleen.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Craft.
I have no announcements tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes, uh, I also want to thank uh Public Works Department uh in newly elected um. I remember when Alicia uh came to Mayor's Bill and we had COVID and it was a little overwhelming to say the least. I'm here we are in the middle of a two huge rainstorm, so uh they did a terrific job. We as council members get uh reports instantly and respond to it and uh we were, I felt very helpful with many of the neighbors were having issues and we responded as quickly as we could uh and learned about it uh from the neighbors too. So I think we're doing a great job of communicating both uh from uh residents and from uh the city to residents. So hope we'll continue. Thank, our, the city manager has a lot to do with that, so thank you.
Thank you, and I want to congratulate and welcome Ed to the dais in his first meeting. We promise will be done before ten thirty. That's the promise.
I got the stopwatch on.
Okay, and I join my colleagues in thanking our staff and Public Works, Lewis, everybody who helped keep our city safe and our our roads clear and and uh it's it's a thankless job, but we are all saying a big thank you and so is the community. A big, happy, healthy, peaceful twenty twenty three to everybody. This is our first meeting in the new year. It's been a great start for Calabasas High School for anybody who follows sports. The boys and girls soccer and basketball teams all winning this week, which is fantastic. I also want to congratulate L B U S D and particularly Chaparral Elementary. Go Cubs on being the only school in the district to earn the state distinguished school honor, which is a very hard thing to get and well deserved what they've done through the pandemic and now getting out of it, hopefully. A big, I also want to thank staff. We haven't had a meeting since, but for the great job they did at the reorganization as well as the next morning hosting the Valley Economic Alliance Twenty Eighth Annual Board Meeting and Installation within twenty four hours. Two events in the same spot, hard to do. Uh, Media also did a wonderful job presenting our city video, which at some point I'm sure we'll show, but thank you to Media for that great job. For those who don't know, there's a Mayor's Youth Council in the city of Calabasas, ages fourteen to twenty one. All you have to do is live here in the city and be interested in getting involved in the community and being a leader. If you are interested, applications close on the twenty third and you, there's a link and you can send the applications to our city clerk, Mari Hernandez. This coming weekend is a holiday weekend and we honor and remember the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King. Uh, Monday is the holiday. We celebrate nationally and uh remember and think about all he did for civil rights in our country and across the world. I would just like to quote one of his quotes. He has so many and we all know them, but this is, this is a good one. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only the light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. So Monday, take a moment, take some time, do something good as we celebrate uh this great memory and wonderful person. Thank you. Now we move on to oral communications and public comment and I'll ask uh if there is anyone in the audience or anyone. Yes, there are public comments. Yes, you can speak up on anything that is other than an agendized item for up to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we have Beth Diktani and Jay-Z Shillen.
Okay, and are they coming up together? Okay, three minutes still though, right? Okay, welcome, two of our fine commissioners.
Thank you for this opportunity. We're excited to highlight our upcoming forum for the city. It's February twenty third and the theme is going to be um changing Calabasas yards and gardens to meet the new era of water scarcity scarcity. And we have three presenters, so we hope that you spread the word to everyone and come join us. It will be at Founder's Hall at six P M and we expect it to be done by eight. The three presenters, we have Heather Melton from the city of Calabasas, so you can hear everything that the city is doing on this topic. And we also have Eric Wilson from Tree People and Alexa Hendricks from the Water District. So we're very excited to have it back in person.
Yeah, um, absolutely. And uh the reason that we actually wanted to bring this to you is that um, we are working within the commission and with the city to bring the information out to the community um and to work on making sure that we can spread the word and get some people here in person to an event and that we're very excited. We're pulling it all together. So thank you for allowing us to bring it to your attention.
Wonderful. I didn't hear the date and the time, if you don't mind repeating.
Twenty third, go up on the mic. February twenty third. And it starts at six and we expect it to be over at eight P M.
Thank you very much. We all look forward to that.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any other uh it online or in person comments?
No other public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, public comment. All right, we'll now move on to what I'll bet a majority of you have been waiting for. Item number one, which is new business consideration, approval of appointments to the Arts Council, Communication and Technology, Environmental, Historic Preservation, Parks Recreation and Education, Planning, Public Safety, Traffic and Transportation Commissions and the Agora Hills Calabasas Community Center. So we're going to do this, is my understanding, that we are, we have a few people who cannot make it tonight due to health or other concerns and they'll be joining us along with some others on the twenty fifth. But for everyone else, But for everyone else, I'm going to go ahead and name your commission and one at a time ask you to stand and go through everybody's, everybody on the list, and then we're going to swear you in all at once. I'm looking at Madam Clerk to make sure that, okay, all right.
Let us go, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Thank you in advance, uh, for all your hard work. Thank you for those who've continued your hard work and expertise. And we, I know as a council are going to hope to keep you much busier and more productive this year than you've been in a few years. That's, that's part of our goal. At least I know I've heard it. So I believe it. I'll start with the Communications and Technology Commission, Michael Brockman. So we get to stand up. You get to stand up first. Stay standing, please. Candace Weber, David Goldwater, Richard Sherman. And we'll move on to Environmental Commission. Everyone keep standing. I'll go through this quicker. Uh, Larissa Byrne, J.C. Shillen, Beth Jogtiani. And you got to tell me, I probably blew that, didn't I? Oh, wow. Okay. Justin Ford. There you go. Mark Silverman. Anita McCollum. Stephanie Williams. And I should, and those last two are Parks Recreation and Education. Charlotte Meyer. Is Charlotte online? No, no. Okay. Well, Charlotte will probably join us on the 25th then. Um, now we're under Planning Commission. Greg Byrne, Michael Harrison, Robert Leah, Dennis Washburn, Wendy Fosher, John Mueller. And now we'll move on to Public Safety. We have Sharon Boucher, Jeff Pariano. Pariano? I blew that. I'm going to ask you. Pariano. I should, it's simple and I blew it. Brian Cameron, Matt Sladeoff. Now we'll move to Traffic and Transportation Commission. Mike Pasha, Mike Pashai, Pashi. I got it wrong. Richard Casal. And on the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center, those will be on the 25th, right?
Mr. Mayor, they're on Zooms.
They're on Zoom.
Yes.
I had the wrong ones. All right. We're going to go back now on Zoom. Lucy Martin on Zoom, former mayor. Jerry Viner, John Swara. There they are. And we'll go back to Traffic and Transportation. Peter Balk. Public Safety Commission, Norma Citron, and Joe Chilco. And that's all I show at this point. Is that right? I, uh, did I say David Cohen? David Cohen. All right. I was going to make you wait, David. No, I'm teasing. We see you all perfectly on Zoom. Thank you. Um, and now I'm going to ask you to all raise your right hand. Okay. And repeat after me, even on Zoom. I state your name.
I, Peter Falk.
You solemnly swear.
Colympus.
The Constitution.
Stand the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith.
To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharging the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Thank you all for your service and commitment. And for those here, I really appreciate that you're going to stay through the whole meeting. No, you do not have to. You are welcome, welcome to get on to doing other work and other things. Thank you very much again. Any of my colleagues wish to say anything? I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say thank you to everyone. And it's very nice to see so many new faces joining our commissions.
I'm waving to the Zoom and thanking them also. But we'll give them a minute to step outside it. Everyone okay to keep going for now? Okay. Okay. And when they close the doors, we'll start. We'll continue. All right. Moving on to consent items, are there any council members who wish to pull any of the items off consent?
Item five.
Item five. Okay. Any others? Seeing none, uh, why don't we go ahead actually, if it's okay.
I just had a couple of questions on five. What is the status of, um, our commission meetings, meeting in person? Cause I've been asked, as, as many people are coming tonight, but beforehand, many of them have asked me about that.
Um, and council member, that has just been, uh, continued on Zoom per council's direction. And anytime that the council would like to have the commissioners return in person, we could do that.
Well, is there, Matt, is there any new state requirements of that starting in March?
We can maintain them through Zoom even past the, the end of the state's declaration of emergency. If we maintain the local underlying declaration of urgency, at least unless the legislature further acts otherwise. So we can continue at least through the end of this year when AB 8, AB 361 expires. Thereafter, perhaps more difficult.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if this, I guess, requires us to re, to agendize it separately. Um, I'm assuming because it, it just seems to me like I, I, we kind of left that in limbo. Cause we're meeting in person. I'm not sure these declarations of emergency are. I mean, you know, it requires us to make certain findings. I'm not sure they're applicable anymore to commission meetings.
One, one thing I do like to point out, councilors, at the last time we had this discussion, um, we decided to continue the commissions on Zoom so as not to do a hybrid meeting for the commissioners. And so if there is a, any inclination by the council to have the commissioners, uh, reconvene, we'd request that it's fully in person and not a hybrid, just because of the staff, uh, time and resources that are used for those type of meetings.
Yeah.
And so it'd be either fully in person or, uh, continue through Zoom as, as long as possible.
Well, I, I'd request, I mean, I'll vote for this tonight, but I request some kind of agenda item in the future addressing this soon because I think it's important that they get back in person.
And the council could certainly consider that add a future agenda item.
Can I just?
Yes, please, Madam, Mayor Pro Tim.
Can you also, before it comes back to us, just survey the commissions, just to get a feel for the commissioners? I've heard as well from some commissioners who want to come back, but then I haven't spoken to others. So I'd be interested to hear from them.
And that's, that's a good point because we've heard from both sides that some are very comfortable and, and, and happy to continue on Zoom. Others would like to come back. So we'll survey the commissioners on that, especially with the new commissioners coming in.
And I'll just add a quick comment on that also. Uh, out of all the commissions, it, it, especially depending on what we have coming forward, I would not want to lose public comment or input, uh, by not having a hybrid potential planning commission meeting. So if we have any commission other than council doing any hybrid type of meeting, that I might suggest the planning commission. That would be just my suggestion.
Or actually in, in response to that, that, that's a good suggestion. Maybe we could come back with a hybrid for when a commission's doing a more than just a, an advisory role. As Matt outlined in one of his, in, in this document.
Right.
No, in another email.
It was another email, but the commissions, the planning commission certainly, so too at times historic library and communications and, and technology each have a taking an action role at different times.
So let's take a look at what that would look like percentage wise. And I don't think that'll be that expensive necessarily.
Okay. Any other council comments? Nope.
I'll move the, I'll move the items in one through 12.
Okay. There's a motion to remove items one through 12. Do I have a correction? It's three through 12.
Correct. Three through 12. Okay.
Sorry.
Three to, three through 12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on all the way to number 13. Hopefully I have that right. Uh, City Council, Consideration of Liaison, External Committee Appointments. And we have, the good news is we have a lot of people doing great work in all different areas and a lot of people who want to, uh, continue to. So I, I guess at this point, I'm trying to think of the best way to do it. Why don't I go ahead and just indicate who is on there or who could be on there? And then we can discuss if there's any discussion on some of these. How's that? Okay. Um, we'll start with, uh, at the top, I guess it is. The Budget Task Force, uh, I have still on there, uh, Councilmember Kraut and myself. And happy to have any further discussion if anyone would like to weigh in on that.
Um, I was unclear on what these entries are. Does this mean the person indicated their interests?
Yes.
Or did you add that yourself?
Shapiro and Kraut, you mean?
No, the Albrecht, like what, what are the different colors and all that mean?
Uh, uh, Mari will tell us, but I believe red means interest, blue, I don't know, but interest probably.
Let me open the document one second.
Of course, although in some places red is no longer.
So in the case of the Budget Task Force, the current members are, um, Mayor Shapiro and Councilmember Kraut and Councilmember Albert, um, expressed interest of joining the budget.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Right. And Ed, we've talked privately, but if there's something we wish to discuss, otherwise.
Um, I just wanted to contribute, uh, if I can on the Budget, uh, Task Force. I didn't know who was going to continue, who was not. I'd happy to be an alternate and, uh, be available if, uh, uh, the, uh, you or Councilman Kraut would, uh, like my assistance if not.
Okay, um, one.
I don't know if you need three people on a, on a.
Two, can only have two. Can only have two on the maximum.
That's the only reason I came. I wasn't sure if they were going to continue.
Right. And then, then the other thought I had, again, with the budget, we, our budget is done in the summer in June. So mu- even though we're doing this now, I thought the, we can have a further discussion at that time. And, and when we're starting a new year and a new cycle, fiscal cycle, uh, about getting involved. So yeah, I, I would like to stay on for one more cycle here. I think David and I have finally uh, gotten a rhythm going. And I think digging down to the depth of the numbers is, uh, you know, the first year's exercise. And I don't think we were really affected until the second year. So uh, if we could, uh, hang on to that for one more year, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think it takes a while to get a rhythm going and they'll let you have it. I don't want to interrupt that. But if you weren't going to continue, then I would have, uh, put my, uh, foot into the ring.
But thank you. Great.
Happy to see you continue.
Great. All right. Any other comments or we'll move on to the next one? All right. Uh, next one is Council Commission Product, Commission Procedures, Council Protocols, which is, I have Councilmember Buzajin and Councilmember Kraut on that with also, uh, Councilmember Albrecht interested in that as well. Cause I don't know if there's an alternate there. I guess not.
Well, I did some work on this. Unfortunately, um, the council came to a consensus that we should finish by the end of July because the filing period for the council seats were coming up and no one wanted to take it up after that, which we all agreed. But Mary Sumar and I did not get together with staff and finish that part of it. So I'd like to continue because I've started it.
Okay. Peter and Ed. Uh, I'll just say that, uh, I think it's, you know, for, for the last two years, we haven't seen any movement on it. Hasn't come back to council as any movement on it. And as a new council member, two years ago, uh, there's so many things that are in there that are instrumental in helping me understand what my role is and what my fellow council member's role is. And with, you know, Ed here is our, our newest council member. I think it's important that we get those done and I don't want to see that languish for another two years. Okay. I'm fine with that. Ed, comments? Any comments?
No comment. Uh, as again, it applies the same as it did with the Budget Task Force. I want to help out where I can. I'm not sure, uh, if some members, some council members want to drop and go to another, uh, committee. I'm here as a backup on, on many of the ones that I've asked. So.
All right. So at this point, I think if I heard right, um, uh, Councilmember Buzajin and Kraut will proceed on this one. Okay. All right. Next, uh, Economic Development Task Force. Peter, you're on every task. I know. Uh, Councilmember Kraut and Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub is what I have here. And is that correct? I didn't know what blue meant.
I was confused why that your name was Xed out.
Why is his name Xed out?
Who?
Peter.
No, bl- blue, blue would have been when I submitted my comments to Mari.
It's Xed out. It's like lying.
Why is it Xed out?
I was like, wait, you want to leave?
Oh, that, yeah. Uh, I, I was suggesting that that was something I would be willing to give up.
Oh.
Okay. Uh, just. Okay. Trying not to be everywhere. Just, I, I've liked what we've done there, but there's a few areas where, you know, my attention is. Let me then turn to the newest colleague on council and ask, Ed, would you be interested in serving on that?
I'll be happy to take it.
Okay. So you are now on the, unless there's objection on the, uh, Economic Development Task Force. Okay. All right. Next is Public Safety, Emergency Preparedness. And I am on that along with Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub. And we have some things upcoming. I've worked hard on it. I want to continue to work on it. And I know Ed, it's also something you're interested in.
I'd like to continue on this one. I know we have a bunch of meetings coming up over the next few months and something that I'd like to see through.
How many meetings?
Way too many.
And Ed is ready to step in at any time.
Yeah, if necessary. I was on the, uh, Public Safety Commission and I emphasized that as long as I've been around, uh, the city. But when the time is right, uh, if someone wants to step down, I'm willing to take that role.
Thank you.
If I can just add, the good thing about that commission is almost, I'd say everything comes back to the council. So everyone weighs in on that too. So you'll be an active participant.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to Open Space Annexations Task Force. I have, uh, Councilmembers Buzajin and Kraut on that. Everybody okay? It is two people, right? On that? Okay, perfect. Next, on School Site Task Force, I have Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub and myself. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Moving on to Homelessness Task Force, Homeless Task Force, I have Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub and Councilmember Kraut. Okay. I'll move on to next is Wireless Service Task Force, which is Mayor Pro Tim Weintraub and myself. Although we will, we'll know, we'll see if we can keep doing things other than meeting with our assembly members. Anyone else? Okay. I'll move on to the, your, everybody's favorite. Everybody put this one Sustainability Task Force. And since I believe my name is there, I do want to continue on the Sustainability Task Force, obviously, of course. Uh, and there is, there was an indication from at least two colleagues of interest in this if it involved a potential, uh, and, and I'll say it out loud. There's no secret infrastructure involved in, in this task force possibly to help reduce and save on water issues. And I, I believe Councilmember Kraut was interested in that basis. Yeah. Can I speak to this item? Please. Um, again, first of all, uh, wasn't, uh, on my radar, but if the, the city needs me to serve in this role, I'd be glad to do it. If somebody else wants to do it, I'd be glad to let somebody else do it as well. Uh, I think my comment, uh, when I spoke to, to David about this was sustainability is often perceived as conservation, conservation, conservation. And, uh, you know, I see in particular our water crisis as a two pole problem, conservation as well as infrastructure to save these deluges that we're getting so that we can reuse them at a later date. Um, and, uh, I see sustainability is, is something, uh, that needs to be tackled from both sides. Um, and uh, I see sustainability is, is something uh that needs to be tackled from both sides. Uh, and I perceive the sustainability task force as looking at it from only the conservation side, uh, which is why my original disinterest. Uh, I don't want to serve the city outside of uh the interests of the city, so I thought I'd be just fully disclosing my, my opinions and, and interest in that committee. So if anybody else has got a different opinion or wants to get involved in that, I'm willing to give up the seat and if that seat needs to be filled, I'm willing to fill it. Okay, uh, council member Albrecht, have anything to add or?
Uh, yeah, uh, David, are you going to uh maintain your role there if we have two people?
I will definitely maintain, yeah, but.
Peter, do you want to continue on that?
He's not been, I have not been on it, so it's, it's up for grabs. And if that's something that you're interested in, I'm.
I'll be happy to take it over. I'll be happy to step in there. Uh, and maybe I might ask you some questions from time to time if you can.
The Brown Act wouldn't allow that.
Yeah, that's.
There's only two of us.
You and I.
All right, so that will be uh councilmember Albrecht will join on the sustainability task force. And we'll probably end up with a subcommittee, I'll bet you. For infrastructure, just hypothetically. All right, move on to the next page. Agoura Hills Calvass Community Center, Joint Powers Authority Board, that's exciting that we're, we're even doing this right now, right? For the opening, hopefully. I have uh councilmember Bizagin with uh councilmember Kraut as an alternate right now.
That's correct.
Everybody good with that? Okay. Next, we have the Calvassus Chamber of Commerce, a lot of interest there. We have councilmember Bizagin and councilmember. No, Kraut was crossed off there, giving that seat open for councilmember Albert. I didn't mention your name yet. Do you want to be on?
No, I'm, I'm referring to the document.
I only have.
I have my own super secret document.
A super secret document. Please continue, sorry for the interruption. Councilmember Bizagin and Councilmember Albert as well. It's two people, correct? Or is it an alternate position?
No.
Okay.
Sold America.
Okay, and uh, councilmember Kraut, you're okay with that?
I am.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next on to California Contract Cities, I have councilmember Bizagin with the alternate for that position being councilmember Albert. Does that sound right?
Which, which ones is contract?
Contract cities.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's not an alternate for that. Well, actually, there, there, it might be structured that way.
Case, there's some reason you can't make it. I like alternates.
No, I mean, I, I was wondering if it was two equal positions.
Oh, I don't know.
No, because there's a voting, yeah, there's a voting component to it and I'm on the board, so.
Okay. Uh, everyone okay with that? All right, next, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I have councilmember Bizagin and I have councilmember Albert as an alternate. Anyone else wish to take part in that? Okay, so that's set. Uh, next we have the clean, another one that i- is overflowing with applicants, Clean Power Alliance. I'm looking in the audience. Um, I will step up to where I was a long time ago and be the representative for the city. I know Michael McComville attends a lot, he's an alternate, but we do need an alternate. Uh, and I would offer that position. I know I had conversation, I believe, with councilmember Albrecht, but if someone else would like to join as an alternate, please feel free to let us know. Ed, you're interested. Okay. So, and you can attend as many meetings as you wish as an alternate, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next we have Headwaters Corner Interpretive Center Board of Directors and I have councilmembers Kraut and Albrecht as the representatives. Am I miss, is there someone else who wishes to be involved? I'll look on the left. Are we sure councilmember Weintraub doesn't want to stay on?
Peter definitely has it handled.
And James.
Peter and staff.
You're okay passing on that one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. Next, we have the Los Burgess Malibu Council of Governments, a cog, and uh Mayor Pretend Weintraub has been on it. I have been the alternate. I know there's interest also from councilmember Bizagin and Albrecht. I wish to maintain my involvement, as I may have mentioned, because I'm, I'm also elected to represent that cog uh for SCAG and I do maintain when they ask me to or when there's something important I do report. I have again given deference to uh Mayor Pretend Weintraub because that's something I know she's been involved with for many years and done a great job. So I presume you want to maintain.
I'd like to stay on.
Okay. And then other discussions? Any discussion? Okay.
I just had, oh, I can ask it. When we're done, I have a comment about this.
Okay. We can go back. All right, uh, next, League of California Cities, I have councilmembers Bizagin and Kraut. Now, was one an alternate or you both on that? Cause I would.
The only time the alternate thing comes up is for the annual meeting where we do have to say who is the voting delegate and I don't, I think I was last time, but Peter actually went because I came home early.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter.
Okay, so should we just leave it as it is?
Yes.
Okay, good. LA County City Selection Committee, the mayor or designee. Hi, Ed, no. Um, there is a meeting tomorrow at ten AM, I believe virtually. Um, and I will attend on behalf of the city. Uh, there are a few items to discuss, but generally, as I think councilmember Bizagin has told us for years, that is a very long, usually a long drive, not anymore, but just a long.
It will be again, very soon.
Well, that's where we have designees. Do I need to do a designee now or at the time?
Uh, they changed the rule recently. I don't know, Matt.
I believe in that one, you can do the designee at the time.
Yeah.
The mayor by default and then open designated if need be.
Mayor Pretend.
And it meets it regularly.
Yes, I, I went to, yeah, the last meeting was no, not fun, but I'll be there tomorrow. There we have no one from our city or areas running that I'm aware of for some positions. They include library for LA County, uh, including our uh Supervisory District and they include a couple other items.
We actually get to vote on that, but we can't serve on it because we would secede it from the library. That's why you didn't see us get an invitation to apply.
I know. And there's Metro also coming up, uh, and I, is that the AQMD or SQM?
One of them is.
Yes. All right, if there's anyone who you are supporting or not supporting, you can certainly let me know or speak now if you know. All right, uh, I will take that one. Next is LA County back, West Vector and Vector Born Disease Control District, uh, councilmember Bizagin. Do we even need an alternate for that?
Uh, you're not allowed to have an alternate for it, actually.
All right, don't bug me.
So exciting, though, that I'll be at the meetings. Slap off.
All right, next is the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Avenue, cause you're board and I believe that's two people. And I have councilmember Kraut and councilmember Albert. Is that right? Okay, anyone else wish to?
Here, here, I don't believe it's two people.
Uh, it's not?
I think there's an alternate.
Okay, all right.
I think we're allowed one.
That's off. Yeah, I believe there is an alternate for that one.
There's one seat we're allowed.
Okay. Then uh, councilmember uh Albrecht, would you like to be yet another alternate on this?
I'd be happy to be an alternate.
All right, thank you. You've got more committees than you thought, right?
Well, it's a good fill in role.
All right.
Doesn't made it hit her.
Yes. All right, Southern California Association of Governments, it's uh something I've been doing. I'm happy to do it. I, I think there should be an alternate there in case I'm not here to report or make a meeting, although I do. And that, since you're on the committee already, you, Mayor Pretend Weintraub?
I can do it since I'm.
Okay. And next is the Valley Economic Alliance. Again, I will be there tomorrow morning at eight AM, bright and early for the summit with the new mayor of LA and our new county supervisor. Uh, and I've been on the board about fourteen years, I think, but I would recommend that since he is apparently going to join, hopefully, that councilmember Albrecht be the alternate unless someone else objects or wishes.
I'd like to be.
Okay. All right, and then there is VICA, which I am, I enjoy doing and I go to about five or six events a year, but I would certainly recommend that councilmember Kraut, who is interested, be the alternate for that, at least for some time, unless someone else wants to be involved. Would that be good?
Yep.
Okay. And that's all I have. And ask for council comments, questions, or do we need to vote to approve all this?
Yeah, we should be served approved it to the outside agencies, but one motion will be sufficient for all.
Okay, um, before that, are any council comments, questions at this time? Nope.
And no public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any public comment, anyone online? I see a, a very full audience, no?
No public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, then can I ask for a motion to approve all the council liaison appointments and committee of.
Second.
It's been moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, designate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, everybody, for stepping up to do this a lot of work, which it really is. All right, now we'll move on to track register uh for covering October twenty ninth and December twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two. The council comments, questions, seeing none. Uh, we'll move to task force reports. We'll start with Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, uh, councilmember Kraut. Uh, nothing tonight. Okay, councilmember Bizagin.
Yes, uh, as I announced at the beginning, the um Chamber of Commerce is having its installation banquet on January twenty eighth and we have a table at the, uh, maybe two tables at the event. So uh, hopefully everyone will register because it's got um, limited seating. Uh, and I also the uh, just to reiterate, another item, I, I attended the uh Sacramento Legislative Orientation Tour uh this past few days and I will be uh submitting several things as a result of that. One of which will be coming up later in future agenda items requests. Uh, that was for contract cities.
And councilmember Albert?
No comment.
Okay, I'll just mention, uh, I already mentioned tomorrow from eight to two PM at Northridge is the Our Region Future Summit for the Valley Economic Alliance and the city hosted the very well, really great job and, and uh honestly, uh, Assemblymember Jack Irwin sworn the board here uh following morning after our reorganization. A VICA annual meeting I attended and I had the privilege to speak and swear in the VICA board for their annual meeting. And I attended uh many, many and will continue to attend uh many SCAG meetings, uh, actually about six of them, including the economic summit, uh, economic summit in uh December. Uh, and will provide reports or documents to the city manager to share with all of us, so you can at least see what's going on. There are some really good grant opportunities for our city that I hope we will take advantage of. And that is it. Now we're on to city managers' report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. Uh, first of all, I um, thank you for acknowledging staff for their efforts over the storm this um, last week. Um, they were very proactive, did an incredible job. Um, and also thank you for taking the time to approve the um state of emergency. Uh, one of the reasons that we requested that council have this on the agenda is over this last week, we've uh incurred probably close to two hundred thousand dollars in expenses. This is equipment, contractors, uh, overtime, uh, so on. And so a- as monies trickle in from the feds or from the state or wherever that might be, this state of emergency allows us potentially to tap into those. And so um, you, you know, not only the time that went into this, but a hundred, literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep our community safe, cleaned up, um, functioning. And so hats off to our, our staff for doing that. Also, um, and tying into something that was mentioned earlier with, from Deputy Di Matteo's uh presentation on February second, uh, we are hosting an event with our HOA boards uh and the sheriff, uh, Captain C two and some of her staff and um the security teams, uh, or companies that work with our HOAs. And this will be hosted by our Public Safety Task Force, our Public Safety Commission. Um, but in this case, we would like to invite the entire council. Uh, we won't do it as a, a formal meeting and so those who aren't on the task force would come as citizens, but we do want you to come and, and be there to listen because I think the presentation would be uh extremely important for everybody to hear just on what the sheriff is doing, uh, some of the ways that they're analyzing crimes and especially looking at open space burglars and what we can do better together with our HOAs and um the sheriffs. And um, that's all I have to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to future agenda items and uh we'll start with James.
Okay, I have three items. One, um, I'd like an update on the status of where we stand with the uh airport, airport noise issue. Received a lot of communications regarding that recently. Um, and this would include an update on the federal legislation. I know the bill was um tabled that we s- supported last uh session of Congress. I want to know if there's uh, what plans are to bring back another bill and, and uh, we have, obviously have a new member of Congress representing us.
I will support that as well.
Second, um, I'd like staff, rather than just to reiterate what we've been getting from the gas company, I'd like staff to do a little more analysis and, and write out something for the community as to why the bills are so high this last month or two. Um, and not just simply repeat the fact that gas prices went up and no one's making a profit. I, it's not credible and no one believes that, so I don't really want to repeat the gas company's rhetoric. Um, that does not need to be agendized here, though.
I was asking if Mayor Pretend wanted to join.
Sure, I just to provide more information to the community, like an analysis.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
And get, maybe give them points of reference where they can go. Third, I would like to have come back here at some point. As I mentioned earlier, it looks like we're going to have a lot of new sheriff's deputies coming through the ranks this year and now is a time where we should be analyzing through our Public Safety Commission, our contract with the sheriff's department and getting recommendations as to what areas we, and what services we can ask for. So I'd like it to go back to the Public Safety Commission to look at our contract, to make that analysis and also to come back to council with those recommendations soon and to have in front of the council a proposed uh letter, if a majority of us approve it, asking the sheriff to allow us to attain additional services.
I'll second that.
Did you say you would?
I'll second that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Pretend Weintraub.
Um, I'd like to request that SCE provide us with an update on the infrastructure improvements in the community. We've had multiple outages in the last few weeks, one last night in Saratoga Hills where there was lack of communication from SCE to the residents. I know we had one by the lake recently and somewhere else, I can't remember, but it seems like, as I said before, the number of outages in our community exceeds what is um suitable and normal and acceptable. So we had a meeting probably two years ago about some infrastructure improvements that, that they were going to do. So I just would like that. I'd like SCE to come report to the council and the community.
I'll second that and I'd supplement that and ask staff to include Public Records Act requests on information aboutages and, and get some facts before that presentation as well.
And also, if I could add to that some, the issues regarding notice and how certain promises were made regarding notice and why those have not been kept.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Albert?
Yeah, I'd certainly like to triple down on that for SC, uh, Southern Cal Gas, uh, the response time and uh their reply to us and situations that we feel helpless with. Uh, we need to understand that better and have a better representative uh for our city. Uh, and the other item uh for me right now, I think uh probably more in the future than the current future would be uh to review the commissions and have a better understanding of how they can play a better role and be more functional uh to the needs of the city council and ultimately to the needs of the city.
And I'll join in that as well. All right, councilmember Kraut?
Uh, nothing new, but I do want to remind everybody that we had a long list of future agenda items left over from last year and I'm hoping that uh they're going to hold their place in line as we continue to look at new items.
All right, thank you. And even from years, some of them. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Otherwise, or future agenda items? Seeing none. Uh, we will now adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three. Thank you very much. Be safe, be well.